Okay, it is 6:02 on April 13th. I'd like to take a minute to open this meeting in honor of our former council member and school board member who passed away on March 25th, Steve Sparky Miller. So this meeting will be in honor of him. All right, can I have the next item, please?
The next item is the flag salute.
Okay. Would you follow me in the flag salute?
Flag allegiance to the flag. To the republic, to the citizens, and one nation. To the equal citizens, to the equal rights and justice.
You'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Karpinski Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Here.
And Mayor Schaefer.
Here. All right. I'm gonna call for public comment in light of what I just spoke about, the passing of Steve Miller. I just want to give anybody who has an interest in coming in forward and saying a few words, you're welcome to do so. Okay, not seeing any, I will move on. Wait a second, okay. Next item, please.
So this meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, April 17th, at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel. And the next item is approval of agenda.
And can I have approval on the agenda, please?
Just one thing on the agenda before we get going. I would like to let everybody know that AB 734, which is the subject of item number 16, has been pulled from committee for this year, so it will not be heard. So in light of that, I would suggest we pull 16 off the calendar.
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Second.
And then on that, just to follow up, I tried to contact as many people that I knew that were interested in that subject, but if you're here to speak on it, you can still come forward and speak during public comment regarding that item if you want to be just heard on it.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing any, anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
All right, so councilwoman Middleton, can we start with you?
Oh, absolutely. This week, we've had the league leaders, California Cities is hosting that, and it's a Legislative Action Week where we go and we talk to our local legislators about what's happening in our communities, our cities, and what we need from our state government. I was able to attend a press release and speak on behalf of the City of Citrus Heights, asking the governor for an additional $3 billion of permanent funding so that we can continue to adequately address homelessness and affordable housing in our communities. We were also talking to the governor about the unfunded mandates and making sure that we have more resources for that, particularly when it comes to redevelopment dollars and making sure that we can find a way to bring that back so that we can actually afford to build the affordable housing, deal with the mental health issues in our communities, and deal with the homelessness that we're experiencing. There were also a couple of interesting panels that we had, and they were talking about the path to reducing homelessness. We had a wonderful general open session, but they also talked today about strategies for local governments to prevent organized retail crime. And there are a few keynotes that I'll be discussing later on with my colleagues and the city manager about what we can really do to address this, because we know that we can't wait for the state to intervene on our behalf. We have to start working at the local level and figuring out how we can be a resource and a participant with our business owners to make sure that we can actually protect our retail dollars and our businesses. And this is ongoing till Saturday, so I'll be there all week. Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Karpinski Costa, what have you been up to?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been kind of busy. I would, and spoke at the Area 6 meeting. They combined their meeting with Area 2, and I enjoy it very much. Next time I go, though, I want more time, because I always have so much to say, and I hate being 15 minutes, can't say it all. I did go to the opening ceremony of the Wall That Heals, and I want to thank whoever organized that to bring that to Citrus Heights. I think it was neat. It was neat. I watched them put some wood chips at Sayonara Center. We leased the building to the after-school program, and so they were updating the wood chips that hadn't been around, you know, the mulch around the property. And so it was nice to go over there and meet Julie, who runs the service over there. Went to a education forum with Lance Christensen as the speaker and learned something about, you know, with our efforts that we're doing towards Citrus Heights schools, that they had people in the room, you know, it was kind of a little meet. Everybody was saying their little, they were writing it on their little cards and all the say, everything everybody had to say. It seems that the problems are so multi, the problems, why California in general is number 50 in the United States, is basically our outdated education code, which was written back in the 1800s and really has only been, every time they modify it, they just kind of change a little language when it really needs to be all redone, but it would require redoing the Constitution, which nobody wants to do. So it is kind of an outdated education code that would persist in any school district, be it our own or theirs. So it kind of was frustrating to say there's like hopelessness out there. Oh, I went to the SUEW meeting yesterday, and I have good news. Your SUEW rates will not be increasing this year on this budget, even though the cost of everything went up for the SUEW districts, you know, by way of personnel costs and chemical costs for the treatment plant. They're not planning to raise the rates at all. In fact, SUEW impact fees that people pay to hook up the SUEW are going down. So for residential, they're going down several hundred dollars, and for commercial, they're staying stable for the next several years. So that was good. The STA meeting that was scheduled for today was canceled, so I didn't have to go to that. Let's see what else. Oh. I'm still a member of my neighborhood association, SUEW, and so Natalie Price and I, you know, we do a thing at Easter, and I'm just so proud that we do it. And I dress up like a chicken, and Natalie dresses up like a big giant bunny, and we deliver food to a dozen homes in the city, seniors that are on the Meals on Wheels program. And I'm sure Natalie will come next meeting and do a video presentation of our journey, and the people that we meet are just so sweet and wonderful, and it's just nice to know that the neighborhoods can get involved in local things. I mean, it's, I encourage all the neighborhoods to take on projects through either the Projects Grant Program, or their NIP monies, or just, you know, everybody pitches in. And so it's a good program, and I think that's all I have for today.
Great. So councilmember Jane Taff, what have you been up to?
I'm going to title my short report as Stories, Information, and Advocacy, because it feels like that's what I've been engaged in the last couple weeks since our last meeting. First with the stories. I also attended the Wall That Heals opening ceremony, but I also attended the Story Day on Saturday, where veterans came and told their stories and shared their learning through their experience in Vietnam. And it's amazing. It's amazing what these young men and women experienced, and we heard from a nurse. And just very interesting to hear from individuals who've gone through a war as horrific as that. So that was the story that really touched me this past couple weeks. Information, lots of information. As a city council member, I attended the cap-to-cap where we are traveling through the SAC Metro Chamber from our capital city to the national capital of Washington, D.C., and meeting our congressmen and women and advocating for what we need here in California. But we also, locally, as councilmember Middleton had mentioned, we've also been advocating here locally. The information that I experienced was attending a regional meeting for greater Sacramento area regarding water storage. You know, we just had record rains. What is the water storage situation? We got an excellent report on that. And ADUs, understanding what's happening with the ADU process as it pertains to other cities, what are their learnings, and how can we extrapolate information that's important for us as we go about those additional dwelling units here in our city. So stories, information, and advocacy for me.
Thank you very much. And Vice Mayor Daniels, what have you been up to?
Thank you. I'll start mine with, started my day off with a lovely breakfast at Rosie's Restaurant on Auburn Boulevard. Head down there if you get a chance, a shameless plug to them. And actually, why I'm bringing that up is, I'd like to actually encourage my other council members, maybe between meetings, to visit a business, a restaurant, something. And maybe during our council comments, just give them a plug and promote our city and promote our businesses, and just hope to influence some behavior towards them. And then I want to kind of transition that in very carefully to challenging my fellow council members. We all care about Citrus Heights, we all care about our districts, but as I drive around, and I'm around the city a lot, I'm just in a lot of different areas constantly. There's problem areas in all of our districts, and there's some things that I think that don't get the attention that they should all the time. And so I'm just gonna ask all our council members to drive their districts, identify some issues, and be that squeaky wheel, because I think we are waiting on the public to step up and notify us more about problems, notify us about blight, notify us about potholes and things like that. But I think we might be suffering a little bit from the aspect of, well, somebody else probably already called it in, somebody else probably already said something. You know, I'll give you an example. There's a gal that's been camped out at the Sylvan Library now for two weeks, you know, and she's just laying in the grass, you know, throwing trash everywhere, and she's been there for two weeks now. And I just let that go. I didn't call, I didn't bug anybody. Normally, I'd bug Ash and whatnot, but I just let that go to see if that would stop. And it's been two weeks now. She's still there. She's still there. And I know my wife doesn't like taking our six-year-old over there when that's the kind of experience that might be occurring. I took a whole bunch of pictures there Monday, I think it was, yeah, Monday, of just all kinds of stuff around there. And then I just, I let that go again. Some of that fixed itself and whatnot. But I'm not here to say that I do it and nobody else does, because that's not the case at all. But I'm just saying, let's owner districts a little bit, maybe more aggressive, and let's make sure that that's getting in, that information is getting in, that there's a problem here. I know that, well, I'm not gonna go into it. No, there's just some problem areas in each district that I think really need some love. Tuesday, I attended the Chamber, Citrus Heights Chamber Lunch, which was very interesting. An investigator from the District Attorney's Office made a presentation mainly around fraud and the different kinds of frauds that can occur to people, businesses, and whatnot. I believe the Chamber might have some links to some of their information, so if you want to get that, visit the Chamber website, and maybe they can help you with that. But some very interesting things about current fraud type of scenarios and situations that are going, and people are being victimized. Today, I attended the Sunrise Marketplace Board of Directors meeting. Really good meeting, a lot of stuff is going on, and for those who don't understand what the Sunrise Marketplace is, it's basically the one-square-mile business district surrounding the mall area. It's a very vibrant district. There's a lot of things that go on. We're the victims of a dying mall, and that's very unfortunate, but the area itself is very vibrant, and there's a lot going on, and there's a lot of things being done to keep that cleaned up, to keep it beautified, if you will. And so there's a very strong effort there. And I just wanted to take also a moment to throw some praise on Megan Huber. She came and did a presentation about certain things, including our efforts to help businesses thrive right now, and with our million-dollar grant program that we have. And she presented it very well and created excitement that Megan does, and so just wanted to publicly praise her on that. Let me see, on Monday, I think it was, yeah, I attended the RT Board of Directors meeting, and no, not a whole lot out of that. We continue to go through the 50-year celebration for regional transit, including they are offering free rides on buses and light rail through April on Tuesdays. They will also offer a free bus and rail on Earth Day, which I believe is April 20-something. It's a Saturday, I believe. So put that on your calendar also. I attended the Wall That Heals opening and closing ceremonies and couldn't be more pleased with the outcome. My understanding is we had about 8,000 people that visited that. If you didn't get over there, you really missed something. Hopefully, that will come to fruition as a permanent type of memorial here in Citrus Heights. It would certainly be, I think, well-deserved and something that we would be proud to host in our city. And my final thing is yet another school shooting in Tennessee, and I don't know what we're waiting for, guys, you know? We need SROs in our schools. Our kids need protection. I don't know what we're waiting for. That's it.
Well, thank you. So I also have had a very busy couple of weeks here. I want to thank Vice Mayor Daniels for standing in for me at the opening and the closing ceremonies of the Wall That Heals. On that evening, I had a family gathering that I couldn't have, it was a once-in-a-lifetime thing. My family would not have forgiven me if I hadn't attended. Unfortunately, the very next day, I got a call from my brother, and he said that my mother had been admitted to the hospital, and she was going to die. So I took my kids and we flew to Portland to be with my mom. She passed away on Tuesday, so. So I wasn't able to attend the closing ceremony either. So, but I'm deeply sorry that I missed that, planning on going to Washington, D.C., and seeing the wall in Washington, D.C. So I did, again, deeply saddened by the loss of Steve Sparky Miller. I did go and attend the school board meeting where they were gonna make a decision on whether they're gonna hold a special election, or they were gonna appoint his replacement. I certainly lobbied to have a special election. There were several other people that, our own Jeannie Bruins sent an email in, she wasn't able to attend, asking for a special election. And after quite a lot of deliberation, back and forth, different votes, they did come to the resolution that they did do a full unanimous vote to have a November election through. It's kind of a weird thing, but through the, the rules are that the seat has to be vacant for 130 days, and then it can be held in June or November. So it's too late for June, so November 7th is when that election will happen. So look forward to that, and I'm grateful for the school board for making that decision. So I also attended the Area 10 meeting, very lively and festive group. I just really enjoyed Dr. Jane Karpinski Costa, and that was, certainly, they were getting, ramping up for Easter weekend, and so that was really enjoyable. I also had a meeting with Congressman Ami Vera. Many of you may have seen the photograph of me labeled as, I'm sorry, Armando Velazquez in the paper. Instead of my own name, I did email Paul and said, and all he responded, he'll get it corrected online, but he's complaining about the graffiti on his boxes. So anyhow, with that, that's really all I had, so let's move on to the next item, please.
The next item is public comment. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and state your name for the record.
I have four speaker cards here. These are all on general items. I just want to encourage anyone who would like to speak. We are a friendly group here. You shouldn't feel nervous. We have all, all five of us, at one point or another, stood at the podium, so we know what that's like. So with that, I'd like to invite Kathy Morris to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am Kathy Morris. I'm currently the president of Chayson, which is Citrus Heights Neighborhoods Area 7, 8, and 9. We are very much concerned with the entire city, however, we do focus very much on our neighborhood area. We're an active area. We have meetings the third Tuesday of every month, and we try and keep in communication. At this, I wanted to bring to note a couple of programs we're having. This month, April, we're having Mike Rutledge, representing the City Police Department, who's going to give us a presentation on, we call them drones. They call them UAS, which is unmanned aerial systems. I like drones better, but, and he's gonna give a presentation, and then we're gonna go outside and see a demonstration. So we have to expect good weather. We appreciate your support on that one. What I really wanted to bring to your attention is in May, we're going to have Representative Josh Hoover with us. When you had your meeting here to introduce him, Bill met him and asked him to come to our meetings, and he said yes. And I think it's a very great thing that our state representatives will come to visit us on a local level. So I wanted to make sure you know about that. It's in May, our May meeting, May 16th, and you're certainly, well, you're invited to any of our meetings, but you certainly invited to that one with Assembly Representative Hoover. And the national layout, of course, is August 1st. So we're always pleased to have any of you with us. Any questions about any of us, let us know. I just wanted to make sure you knew about, particularly about Representative Hoover. Thank you.
Can I comment, can I comment on something for Chayson? I want to thank Kathy, because I said her earlier, I'm on her email list, and I see how much you send out and how beneficial the neighborhoods are to the people who participate. You have so much information. She even sends the minutes. I do the minutes for SUEW, and I don't send them out. So you send out your minutes, and it's almost like, I feel like I've been to your meeting. So your minutes are good, your members ask questions that get answered from, you forward those out, and I just want to encourage people to participate in neighborhoods, because that's an example of how benefits you get for it. Thanks.
Thank you, Jane. I also appreciate the fact that the city lets us know what's going on, and therefore we can tell if there's something happening in our neighborhood, we can tell our neighbors, and they can approve a protest or scream.
You do good communication.
Keep the communication going. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, can I have Paul Reyes, please, come to the podium?
Mr. Mayor, distinguished councilmembers, my name is Paul Reyes, a member of American Legion Post 637, Gunnar Sargent, United States Marine Corps retired, and a two-tour veteran of a little skirmish we had called Vietnam. I'm here because I wanted to personally thank you all for what you did for us and for the veteran community, which was to grant the money that we asked for to bring the wall here. I was to have been here that, on November 10th, to plead my case. I was actually at the Marine Corps Birthday Ball, and I had Mr. Kermit Schultz and Mr. Ray Reilly come and, like, stay. The, I gotta put it, the plan was for, according to Mr. Schultz, was Ray Reilly was to lie through his teeth, and he was gonna back him up on it. And so apparently it worked. I received an email or a text message about 8:30 that night from my good friend and fellow Marine, Commander Chris Fry. It said, "Hey, Marine, happy birthday. The council voted 100% to grant you the money." The following Wednesday, I received a check for $1,000 from the local Rotary. The wall was coming. Then it was just hard work after that. But what I wanted to present to you, a certificate of appreciation. This certificate of appreciation is gratefully presented to the City of Citrus Heights in recognition and sincere appreciation of outstanding service and assistance which contributed to the advancement of American Legion programs and activities dedicated to God and country. Presented by Paul Reyes, host of the Wall That Heals, American Legion Department of California, this 13th day of April, 2023. May I bring this up to you, Mayor?
Yes. Would you like us to come down and get a photograph with you?
Whatever's easiest for you.
Let's do it.
And one of the things, too, is that I wanted to let the Vice Mayor know, the Wednesday after the wall left, we had a debriefing meeting at Stones, and, no alcohol, and it was just a debriefing meeting, but I mentioned that I had met some young lady, well, I think it was Saturday of the wall, that is with corporate donations with Hewlett Packard. We talked a little bit. She said, "What do you think you're gonna need?" I told her, I said, "I may not be able to get you all of it, but I have contacts with several other large corporations that will get you the money you need. The wall will be here." I told people that. I mentioned to some people that if I had anything to do with it, we're gonna have the permanent structure here, and what's gonna be cool about it is that it will only be the second city in the entire state of California that has the wall. The other one is a little old tiny dinuba down in the Central Valley. And my thought was, something great to give to my adopted hometown. And I'm just, we thought it'd be 36 months, but with this corporate donation, it might be here inside of a year, and for everybody to see and everybody to enjoy. And, you know, I get a little emotional, but we should have been there on Saturday. One gentleman was walking back through to the parking area, and I said, "Did you see everything you wanted to see?" He said, "Yes." I said, "$100,000 question." And he teared, and he just broke down. And that happened to me, too. On a Wednesday, I went up to the wall, nobody was around, I put my hand on it, and my knees gave way. He asked me what the real reason for doing this was. I said, "Well, I wanted to give something to my adopted hometown, you know, to have the veteran community recognize, but really and truly, there's 58,281 reasons why." And we made sure that we also recognized the eight nurses that were there on the wall. They were, you, we heard when we called them out, and that was a promise that I had made to female veterans. I think I've gone over my five minutes. This is not going up at the post office, is it?
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. All right, can I have Daniel Thicpen come up? He wants to talk about news from schools.
I did, until I had to follow that, so. Good evening, Mayor Schaefer, councilmembers and city staff. Daniel Thicpen, on behalf of the Sammon Unified Leadership Team, did want to bring a couple of news items here tonight for the community, a couple of items that we're pretty excited about, and that we hope the community shares in excitement. First is a follow-up related to our innovative elementary school program. So I think you've heard us talk a little bit about the community's desire for new and innovative ways to reimagine early learning in our schools, in our Citrus Heights schools. So in case you're a community member who didn't see the announcement, we wanted to make sure everyone knew that this week, the district's week, the district selected Woodside K-8 to be its district hub for an innovative elementary school program. And what does that really mean? What is that going to look like? And I think the short answer is, we really need the community to help us determine what that's going to look like. There's only one rule, and that's that we can start fresh, and that we don't have to do what was always done. So we're going to be working with the staff there, and we're going to see which staff potentially want to come into that site and be a part of this, and starting from the ground up. We want to engage the whole community, certainly the neighbors in the immediate community, and also throughout Citrus Heights, in that process. So that's going to start now. If you're interested in learning more and getting email alerts about it, go to our website, samone.edu/woodsideinnovation. That's all one word in the URL. You can sign up for email alerts on how to get involved and stay updated. But this is going to be a year-long process, because again, we don't want to go in with any assumptions. We want to make sure that we're using feedback, research, seeing what, seeing what works in other schools, and then taking what we are learning through the project at Woodside and applying that at schools throughout the area. As some of you know, we had a community engagement process at all of our Citrus Heights Elementary Schools, and we learned a lot through that process. So the team of trained teachers and educational experts that helped lead those community engagement sessions are still going to be working with those sites to talk about what they learned and how we can take that work to the next level. So it continued to be an evolution, but we're excited and working with the community on what that might look like.
Great.
And then, second announcement tonight, if you're not familiar, we have an annual Spirit of San Juan Awards Program. That's a program where we highlight parents, staff, students, community members, or organizations in all of our schools that go above and beyond to reduce barriers to student learning, to create an inclusive environment, or to just all around strengthen their school communities. We have two awardees in Citrus Heights schools this year. The first is Ronnie Rashawn Brown, the head custodian at Carriage Drive Elementary School, who has been a role model and made a huge impact at their site in a variety of ways. And Freddie Bryant is a teacher and the athletic director at San Juan High School. So the entire community is invited to come celebrate them. We're very excited that they're part of this year's awards. And both Ronnie and Freddie will be honored on Thursday, May 4th, at 6:00 PM at Rio Americano High School. It's free, but you definitely still need to get tickets, because we have limited capacity. So go to samone.edu/spirit, grab your seat, and I'm sure we'd love to have a great turnout from the community to help honor Ronnie and Freddie. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, so next up, I'd like to have James Morin. He wants to talk about the local homeless.
Thank you. Yes, my name is James Morin. I'm just a local member of the community, concerned citizen. And I just want to bring up this topic, because I don't believe it's being addressed adequately by the council. Last week, I went, drove around with St. Mel's Catholic Church to help feed homeless in the area. We encountered at least 50 people. There is no shelter in this city. I don't believe this issue is being addressed adequately, and I think it definitely needs to be. I believe housing to be a right, and housing is also, I believe, to be a political issue, essentially. Whether or not person is working or not is irregardless. Housing essentially is a right. We look at schooling as a right in this country, and we fund it adequately. Therefore, I believe housing is basically, falls under the same, same idea. I don't have any, you know, specific initiatives or something like that. I, I just would like the council to really think about this issue much more seriously, and tell us all how, what you're doing to address this issue, other than rousting homeless people from, from, by use of the police, basically. That's really all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, I have one more speaker card, but that is for item 13. So with that, we would like to move on to the next item, please.
The next item is presentations, and Presentation Four is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week.
Oh, I thought you were going to introduce me. This is.
Dr. Gina Carpentzicosta, would you please read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a, I'm going to read this part. Who's here representing animal control? Come on to the podium, please. And after I read this, you're welcome to give any report and information you want to give.
Thank you.
So this is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming April 9th to 15th, 2023, as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. Whereas, the National Animal Care and Control Association has designated the second week of April each year as Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. Are we all animal control officers? One, two?
Supervisor, manager, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And we'll get you to introduce yourselves. I'm sorry, we should have done that first, but I'm reading now. Whereas, animal service officers provide essential community functions, including the enforcement of animal control laws, protecting the public from disease such as rabies, and educating the public on the proper care of the community's pets. And whereas, animal service officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing animal abuse and neglect, keeping the public safe from dangerous animals, rescuing injured animals, reuniting lost animals with their owners, abating neighborhood nuisance issues. And whereas, animal services is highly efficient and productive in their, animal services is highly efficient and productive in their service to our community, including their responses this past year to over 3,200 calls for service, their intake and processing of 511 animals, and their efforts in adopting out 274 animals, and successfully reuniting 181 animals with their owners. And whereas, animal service officers have a highly visible role in the communities they serve and regularly interact with the public, and enforce a variety of federal, state, county, and local laws in their capacity. Whereas, the City of Citrus Heights want to recognize and honor the animal service, services officers in our community, and acknowledge their commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of, City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the second week of April as Animal Services Officers Appreciation Week, and do hereby urge all Citrus Heights community members to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and serving individuals who serve as our animal service, services officers. Now, if you could introduce yourselves, I'd appreciate it, and then if you want to speak, and then I'll come down, and we'll do this, and we'll have a little group photo.
Fantastic. Thank you. I'm Tiffany Campbell. I'm your Police Services Manager.
I'm Toni Fleener, Animal Services Officer.
Can you step closer to the microphone?
Toni Fleener, Animal Services Officer.
I have a couple of words I'd like to share about our amazing unit. So, good evening, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, and members of council. I am Deborah Nathan, the Police Services Supervisor for Animal Services Code Enforcement and Rental Housing. This falls under our Special Services Division, led by Commander Jason Rizzo and Manager Tiffany Campbell. We want to express our gratitude and appreciation to City Council for recognizing our amazing services team this evening, celebrating Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. We would like to take a moment to introduce, which we already have, Senior Ruben Hernandez and Officer Alexis Wager is also a part of the team. Our animal services officers work hard to reunite our lost animals with their owners, work with our local shelters to adopt out animals, and educate our community on animal care and reporting concerns. For our animal services officers, the work you do every day advocating for the animals that do not have voices is incredibly important. The level of knowledge, experience, and animal handling skills ensuring the safety of our community members is impressive and highly underrated. Thank you for everything that you do, the sacrifices you routinely make, routinely make, the level of professionalism and care you exhibit daily for our community and department. Congratulations, and thank you, council.
Okay, can I have the next item, please?
Next item is Presentation Number Five, A Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights Proclaiming April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
And Vice Mayor Daniels, would you care to read the proclamation, please?
Sure. First, I'd like to invite Police Services Manager, excuse me if I say this wrong, Chayla Cottrell, and Communication Supervisor Gina Harmon with the Citrus Heights Police Department to the podium to accept the proclamation. You missed that, didn't you?
I did.
Okay, I'm going to read off a bunch of "whereas"es here, and then we'll hear from them. Whereas, emergencies can occur anytime that require police, fire, or emergency medical services in the City of Citrus Heights. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of our law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Citrus Heights Police Department Communication Center. And whereas, our 911 dispatchers are the first contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, our communications professionals are the single vital link for first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, the public safety telecommunicators of the Citrus Heights Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, officer safety, and compassionate understanding to citizens, to the citizens of Citrus Heights. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited empathy, understanding, technical acumen, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights declares the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Communications Network, in honor of the women and men whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. And I'll just finish it up with, somebody who did 20 years in law enforcement responded to 20,000 law enforcement calls, this is the hardest job in law enforcement, without a doubt. This is the hardest job in law enforcement. I wouldn't have traded 20 years for one year in, in dispatch. I'm sure that somebody experiences more stress in one year in dispatch than I did in 20 years. And so I, my thank you from the bottom of my heart. And we'll come down, give you this proclamation, and let you say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, and members of the council. Thank you again for taking the time to recognize this group of professionals tonight.
Can you move closer to the microphone?
Sorry.
Thank you.
These dispatchers, they're not used to speaking.
Yeah.
Not at all. My name is Regina Harmon, and I am one of the communications supervisors for the Citrus Heights Police Department, and I have the distinct pleasure in overseeing our communication center, over our other Police Services Manager, Telecottrell, and under the division of Commander Fry. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week does fall this year, April 9th through the 15th. Started in 1981 by Patricia Anderson on the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office in California, former President Clinton signed a presidential proclamation in 1994, which in part read, "America's public safety telecommunicators serve our citizens daily on countless ways. The work that these unseen first responders is invaluable in emergency situations, and each of these dedicated men and women deserves our heartfelt appreciation. Americans place their trust in these individuals, not just this week, but every day of the year. This week, it is a time for a grateful nation to show its appreciation and to recognize that our health, safety, and well-being are often dependent on the commitment and steadfast devotion of public safety telecommunicators." While the words of this national recognition are 29 years old, they still hold the weight of truth today. We do appreciate the council giving the Citrus Heights Police Dispatch Team recognition through the proclamation. We would also like to share that tomorrow, Chief Turcot will be presenting Dispatcher Andrew, CHPD's 2023 Dispatcher of the Year Award, and we are truly proud of him and the entire dedicated team. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, may I have the next item, please?
Our next item is Presentation Number Six, A Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights Proclaiming April 16th through 22nd, 2023, as National Volunteer Week.
And Council Member Mary Jane Lopez Taft, would you care to read the proclamation?
Yes, absolutely. My pleasure, especially since I was a volunteer manager for Red Cross and Cancer Society. I really, really appreciate this proclamation. So I would like to invite first the Administrative Technician Brenda Anderson and Volunteer Michael Lago Marcino to the podium. Thank you. Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights Proclaiming April 16th through 22nd, 2023, as National Volunteer Week. Whereas, during the week all over the nation, we recognize the millions of volunteers who strengthen, enrich, and improve our community through their tireless and selfless commitment to serving others. And whereas, volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations and volunteer centers. And whereas, individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas, during this week all over the nation, service projects will be performed, and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas, the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas, we honor all of our outstanding volunteers who provided over 7,600 hours of dedicated service dispatched here to the City of Citrus Heights and the Citrus Heights Police Department. And whereas, the service provided by volunteers is integral to the prosperity of the Citrus Heights community. I will echo that. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim April 16th through 22nd, 2023, as National Volunteer Week, as we celebrate and extend our sincere, our sincere gratitude to all volunteers who serve. and extend our sincere gratitude to all volunteers who serve. Would you like to say a few words before we come down and take our pictures?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, and members of Council. It's an honor to speak with you this evening. On behalf of Chief Turkot in the Citrus Heights Police Department, and on behalf of City Manager Feeney and the City of Citrus Heights, we would like to recognize and applaud all of our volunteers and extend our sincere and heartfelt gratitude for their generosity in the giving of their time and talents, as well as their commitment to serving our community. Our volunteers serve in a variety of positions and departments, at City Hall, the Community Center, and throughout our Police Department. As a group, as you said, they provided well over 7,600 hours of service last year alone. Our volunteers' unique skill sets, their experience, and their work ethic make the programs we offer to the community possible. If those volunteers who are here this evening would care to stand? Yeah, we have a few. In recognition of National Volunteer Week, we extend our deepest gratitude to you all. Thank you for your service, for your time, and especially your dedication to the Citrus Heights community. Thank you. Thank Mike.
Mayor Schaefer, members of City Council, Mr. Feeney, in addition to what, we appreciate you thanking us for our volunteer services with the Police Department and the city, in addition to that, I think we should also be thanking members of the general public, the leaders of the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Camp Fire for giving their time to help our youth, the food bank volunteers, volunteers at the library, school volunteers, neighborhood area officers, and Reach Board members, coaches to the youth sports teams in the city, whether it's soccer, baseball, I don't know if we have a football team anymore running around, and also our community marching band volunteers. Without them, this would be a very dull place to live. And so with that in mind, I'd like to thank them for their time in addition to the proclamation that you read. Thank you very much.
Yes, if we could have all of our volunteers who are here come up for a photo, that we should do.
Can we go to two tiers, front and back? Yeah. You're gonna get the podium just like.
Yeah.
I used to be a wedding photographer, let me help out.
The next item is consent calendar items seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12, and I
All right.
would like to just briefly turn it over to the City Attorney for a statement.
Yes, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, just prior to taking action on item number 11, which is the one-time payment for the City Manager, state law does require me to make an oral summary of that proposed action before the Council takes a vote. So at the last City Council meeting, the Council did conduct an evaluation for Mr. Feeney, which was very positive. Accordingly, the Council is now considering a one-time payment to the City Manager in the amount of 5% of the base pay. The payment is non-perceivable and is not ongoing. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody like to pull any items?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to pull items seven and 12.
Item seven and 12. Do I have a motion for items eight, nine, 10, and 11?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Let's move on to item seven.
Well, item seven, you know me, I like look at a page and I can see something that doesn't look right. It just sticks right out at me. So in the minutes, it's agenda packet page, I think it looks like eight. Under public comment, it says, "Elfoxx stated that the exploratory effort in exploring our district is ill," and I think there's a word that should follow the word ill, but I didn't have time to listen to the tape.
I believe it's ill-timed, so we will.
We can just put that.
Yes, I apologize for that. We'll make that.
That's okay, I mean, it happens, but it's just it's our permanent minutes, and so, you know, years down the road, someone's gonna read this, sure, right? So anyway, I noticed that, and if we could just fix that tiny little spelling, that would be nice.
Okay.
Other than that, I'll move item seven.
Second.
Item, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. So item 12.
Item 12, I'd like to remove for a separate vote.
Okay.
Move item 12.
Second.
Okay. So do you want to do a roll call vote for that? Have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Karpinski Costa?
No.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
And Mayor Schaefer?
Yes. Motion passes. May I have the next item, please?
The next item is public hearing, item number 13. The subject is Proposed Amendments to Article 8 of Chapter 22 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code Massage Establishments. The staff recommendation is to move to determine the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under SEQA 15061B3 of the guidelines, and to introduce for a first reading, read by title only and waive the full reading of an ordinance, amending Article 8 of Chapter 22 of the Citrus Heights Code relating to massage establishments.
Good evening, Council. Allison Bermudez is here representing the Planning Division tonight. Thank you for having me present this item to you. What we'll be reviewing are proposed amendments to the municipal code specifically to the regulation of massage establishments. This was last updated in 2016, when the legislature took some different actions. That was the last amendment to this section. Some purpose of the update tonight is really we want to support our legitimate massage therapists and massage establishments that operate in our city. We want to implement some operational restrictions, which are commonly found in establishments that have illicit activity. We want to really reduce the staffing impacts that this industry is having on city staff and the amount of time it's taking to process, and we want to allow opportunities for us to catch up. We have several facilities in the city that we need to work with, and we are getting so many applications, it's been hard to catch up with the ones that are existing. So massage therapy, want to recognize it is a legitimate business. There are several legitimate providers in our city. They really help us in our life through reduction of stress, they lessen our pain and relieve muscle tightness, and they really work to improve our immune system. So we do recognize it as a part of the health industry. Unfortunately, there is a side of the business that is illicit activity. Oftentimes, activities will occur in massage. Common indicators of illicit activity, you might go into a facility that will have locked doors, they might have warning devices on the doors. Many times their windows and doors are covered, you're not able to see into the facility. You won't be asked to fill out any paperwork when you visit those facilities. You may walk in, there's no price signs, there's no services signage listed. They may accept only cash, and you may see indications of people living in the facility. Not every facility has these activities, but these are some of the common things that are found. A couple of the key proposed amendments to this section, we're proposing to cap on the number of establishments that we have in the city. We are going, we would like to amend the section about blocking the visibility into the facilities. We want to be able to see in from the street or from the sidewalk, should be open, bright, and able to visually see in, so you can see activities. We are going to amend the section and allow the use of video surveillance, we'll talk about that, and then some slight revisions to our application process and items that they need to submit. And the reason for this proposed amendment, I want to show you the trends that we've been seeing. This is over the past few years and the number of establishments that are entering the city. We were at a high peak of 50 establishments back in 2016. We had some big surges, legislative changes kind of altered the industry, and so in 2016 we had 50 establishments. And then over time, we have been able to work with that through really great partnership with the Police Department, undercover stings, the significant amount of resources contributed to the reduction. We ended up revoking 18 establishment licenses through those efforts over the couple of years, and in 2019, we were actually down to only 16 establishments. That was our lowest number on record. After 2019, things began to loosen up a little bit, tighten, tighten up with staffing and so forth. We weren't able to contribute all the amount of time that it took, and slowly we've been seeing the increase. Twenty, they started to creep up a little bit more, and 21, and then in 22, we really saw a significant jump, and we're back to 29 establishments and continuing to increase. Just to give you a visual representation of the number of establishments we have in the city, the red triangles indicate the locations. In comparison, you know, we felt we had a significant number of establishments, but we didn't know if we were just getting an excessive number of applications or really what was occurring. So we did talk to partner jurisdictions around and did a survey and found that, wow, we weren't too far off, we were seeing a significant rise as compared to other people. So if you look at the county of Sacramento, the unincorporated area, they have 153 establishments. Rancho Cordova has very minimal number, Oak Grove, small, for total on these 201 establishments, and of that, we have 29. So if you looked at, based on population, we have about one establishment per just under 3,000 people, and the next closest is the county of Sacramento, they're just under 4,000 people. So we have a significant higher number. So what we're proposing to do is put a cap on the number of establishments. We feel we have, we meet our community's needs, there's plenty of opportunity for massage to operate, we have several locations. So we're proposing to cap our licenses at one, based on population, so it'd be one per 3,400 persons, taking our current population, dividing that out, that would allow 25 locations. As mentioned, we have 29, we have 26 operating, three are in the licensing queue, so we're considering 29. So we would be over that cap, but this would allow 25 locations. And just as an example, you know, how we picked the 3,400, if you look at the number of establishments in other areas, kind of tossed out Rancho because they have some unique situations there, but the county being at one per 4,000 people and us at, you know, 3,000 people, 3,400 kind of was in the middle. So that's a number that was just picked based upon rationale and analysis of what was around us. But that number could be changed, should you want to change that number. Here's some schematics of how that would calculate out. As you recall, back in 2019, we were down to 16 establishments, and so that would net out to one establishment per 5,400 people, just to give you an idea of some different And the impact that this would have on existing establishments, it would really have, the proposed cap would have no impact to our massage establishments that are currently existing, that are in compliance and are in good standing. So they would have no impact, they could remain operational, they don't have to close, they don't have to relocate, even though we're over the cap, they're established and could remain operation. They also could sell their business, should they choose, they want to get out of the business or they want to sell it, they were able to do that, and they could sell it to a new owner. There would be no impact in that regard as well. And then, as mentioned, we have three licenses in the queue, as long as they're vested into the location, which means they have submitted their plans for the tenant improvement, the physical changes to the space, we would allow them to be licensed as well. We did, there are some exemptions in the ordinance regardless of the cap. Certain establishments in good standing would be able to relocate. So if you have an existing establishment that's in operation and there's destruction to their space through fire, water damage, something out of their control, we would allow them to find a new location and relocate. And then if they can demonstrate that they've lost their lease, their landowner has asked them to vacate or ending their lease, and they needed a new location, and they were operating and in good standing, we would allow them to relocate as well regardless of the cap. And this is our current regulation, but I just wanted to bring it up so you're aware. An establishment is not a location that provides massage when it's only 25% of the business. So commonly in hair salons, barber shops, you might have someone who provides massage services. They're not included in this cap of locations, as long as their floor area is less than 25%. And that's our current regulation, and that would remain. In addition, we did add another exemption in there where a business could come before you and request what we're calling a public necessity application, and this would be for a massage establishment that wanted to locate here, that was really bringing some sort of business environment, or some, their services they provide are unique, or they're set apart from other massage locations, that they could request their application be reviewed by you, and you could grant them their license regardless of the cap. So examples of that would be if you're a facility and you provide massage therapy, but you also have other holistic or whole body services, you do facials, you do aromatherapy, things like that. That's a different experience than we would find in the city. We don't have any other locations similar to that, that they could come before you and you could grant that license. Those are common experiences you're gonna find with places called like Massage MV, SpaVia, things like that. They're similar type of services. There are some operational amendments included in the proposal. As I mentioned, the visibility into the establishment, we're asking them to keep their window coverings off the front windows, we want to be able to see in for their safety and make it look inviting to the public and not be dark and closed off. We did clarify in the ordinance that exterior doors may not be locked, they need to remain unlocked. The provision does allow them to lock the doors if they're a one-operator establishment for their safety. And then our current ordinance prohibits the use of video surveillance, but now it's pretty much used all over. People rely on video surveillance for their safety and security, so we have amended that section of the code to allow them to. or some, their services they provide are unique or they're set apart from other massage locations, that they could request their application be reviewed by you and you could grant them their license regardless of the cap. So examples of that would be if you're a facility and you, you provide massage therapy, but you also have other holistic or whole body services. You do facials, you do aromatherapy, things like that. That's a different experience than we would find in the city. We don't have any other locations similar to that, that they come, could come before you and you could grant that license. Those are common experiences you're going to find with places called like Massage MV, SpaVia, things like that. They're similar type of services. There are some operational amendments included in the proposal. As I mentioned, the visibility into the establishment. We're asking them to keep their window coverings off the front windows. We want to be able to see in for their safety and make it look inviting to the public and not be dark and closed off. We did clarify in the ordinance that exterior doors may not be locked. They need to remain unlocked. The provision does allow them to lock the doors if they're a one operator establishment for their safety. And then our current ordinance prohibits the use of video surveillance. But now it's pretty much used all over. People rely on video surveillance for their safety and security. So we have amended that section of the code to allow them to use video for their lobby areas, their office area. Obviously, not in the treatment rooms, but other areas in their facility, they could install video for their security. And then we revised some minor application steps. We did significant community outreach on this. We did hold a community workshop on March 1st. We had a good turnout to that. We invited our massage therapists, our business owners and the property owners to attend where we discussed what we've presented tonight. We received feedback from them. And we have worked several of their suggestions into this ordinance. For instance, the ability to relocate due to destruction that came from this group. They were worried about if their landlord, you know, canceled their lease and we were over their cap, that they'd be out of business. And if something happened to their facility, they couldn't relocate. So that was added based upon that input. We did send direct mailers to that same group a couple of different times. One, the last one announcing this meeting here tonight. We reached out to the Sunrise Marketplace and Chamber of Commerce and sought their feedback. The provision for the public necessity for those businesses that are set apart from your traditional massage, that was at their Sunrise Marketplace's requesting. They, in their business district, they were really seeking to bring in that type of service. So they didn't want to limit that. So that was put in at their request. And then when this started, back in January, we have had a dedicated webpage to make sure that they could all see the changes to the ordinance as they progressed and changed and stay in touch with us should they have questions. These amendments really fall into strategic goals set by the city council, really to enhance the community vibrancy and engage our community and preserve and enhance our public safety. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And I have a motion for you whenever you're ready.
Any questions from council? Vice Mayor Daniels?
Can you go back to the map with the red dots? So I'm looking at the top left-hand area, Antelope and 80. And the first one, I'm aware, but the second one, I don't understand where that's at. Is that a home?
No, there's actually two in the Raleigh Center. One is under construction.
To the east of the freeway.
Oh, east, I'm sorry. Stones Casino.
Nope, east of the freeway.
Silver, the one at Garden Gate.
Right, there's one there, I see that. And then there's one to the right, right where it says Antelope Road.
Above the N and the T?
Yeah.
I think that is, so the one at Garden Gate in Antelope.
No, that one's right there, right where it says 80.
That's Stones, the one at 80.
Stones would be on the left then. Unless there's two over there on the north side of Antelope.
I didn't bring the printout. The pins could be off, but I don't, so I'm not sure. I can't recall the exact one.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I, my, it was going to lead to my question of, do you count if somebody works out of their home as an establishment?
We do, but it's not included in the cap and it's not shown on the map. So these maps should represent only the commercial locations. If we count the, as far as all massage establishments, I think we have 39. And that includes home-based. But minus the home base, we're at 29.
And so none of this applies to a home-based business?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question regarding the map as well. Do we have any thoughts on proximity? There are several establishments that are very, very close proximity to one another if they end up in the same shopping area. Has there been any thought to capping that?
Do you consider a separation distance? Many jurisdictions use like 1,000 foot. They can't be within 1,000 feet of each other. We do that with some other business type of activities. We did not proceed with that in this regard, but it's certainly something we consider if that was your desire.
Thank you.
If the whole purpose is public safety, why are the home businesses exempt? Because they could well be centers for drug, you know, human trafficking themselves. I mean, people could come and buy a nice little house in Citrus Heights. I mean, I don't understand why they're exempt, you know, and not added. And it's, and also for mobile units, the people who come into our city and provide the services to customers.
Generally, the ones that we consider home-based are not performing the massage at their home. They are a mobile provider, so they usually are going someplace else. They're going to a facility or to someone's house to give the care. Most of them are not having customers come to their home. So we did not, they have not been an issue for us as far as...
But you license them?
We do license them, yes.
And you inspect if you need to?
If we need to.
Just a comment, which I, I wanted to say that I greatly appreciate the work you've put in here, especially with the map, you know, detailing that out. But more specifically, the fact that you've taken to heart a lot of my comments I've made about when we do these kind of outreach, that we're putting it in other languages. We're translating so that people are being, understand what is happening. So I appreciate you putting it in Slavic and Vietnamese also. Thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
So I have a question. What are we doing for, for hours of operation? Somebody wants a massage at 2:00 AM, for example?
They must close by, I believe it's 9:00 PM. We have operating hours.
Close by, by 9:00 PM?
Yeah, so if you drive by and see an open sign after that hour.
Okay, so what kind, what time can they open?
I believe it's 9:00 AM.
So 9:00 AM?
It's either 8:00 or 9:00 to 9:00 PM.
Okay. All right, so any other questions or comments from council? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing because I have a speaker card on this. I'm going to open the public hearing and invite Lauren McGlashan, McLa, sorry, to the podium.
It's okay, there's over 200 ways to spell my last name. It's McLaughlin.
McLaughlin, okay, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Lauren McLaughlin. I'm a certified massage therapist. And I also represent the interests of over 4,000 graduates of the Healing Arts Institute, which was located here in Citrus Heights. Firstly, I would like to bring to your attention the state law under Business and Profession Codes, Division 2 Healing Arts, Chapter 10.5 Massage Therapy Act, Item 4603.1. Local governments shall impose and enforce only reasonable and necessary fees and regulations on massage businesses and massage establishments in keeping with the requirements of existing law and being mindful of the need to protect legitimate business owners and massage professionals, particularly sole providers. And I would like to say I was present at the open house that they had. I think there was about six of us that weren't part of the staff. And I do appreciate that they did take into consideration the items that were brought up for discussion. I draw your attention to the ordinance amendments, Section 22-604 under definitions. The definition for public necessity is rather confusing and unclear. Section 22-610, the massage establishment cap. There is currently no municipality or county within 22 miles of the city center that has such a cap. I called all of them. This amounts to a moratorium without using the word moratorium. You guys already experienced the moratorium several years ago and you know that it's temporary. This is an attempt to make one permanent. The city currently has 30 licensed massage establishment licenses issued at 23, excuse me, 25 street addresses on nine streets in Citrus Heights. The majority of them are in shopping centers. Many of them do have their windows covered. And we were told at the open house that the cap is to be 25, based on the population of 8,600. And in order to grant new establishment licenses, it would be necessary for six of the current licenses to vacate their license or a combination of that and a great increase in population. Growth is not something anticipated in the numbers in a reasonable time. Item B, under that, who the cap applies to or does not apply to, I should say, I would like to see considered the sole practitioners be added to this exception. They're rarely in shopping centers and they do a different type of work than those that are multiple massage therapist locations. Item D, it talks about, let's see. Oh, the public necessity. The definition of public necessity is still undefined and unclear. Reading it, it's rather confusing. How something could be unique to the city of Citrus Heights with regard to massage is beyond me. Then item number, Section 22-613I, oh, excuse me, that's a J, floor plan. This should only apply to the case of leasehold improvements. If someone rents an office, they shouldn't have to give you a floor plan for that. And then Section L, I'm not sure what this means. It's talking about demonstrating the location of proposed establishment as approved for occupancy, building and fire. That sounds like something that would be done while it's being built. So those of us who attended the March 1st open house were finally told that the 19 businesses which were closed, were closed for prostitution and that they had in fact not gone through all the legal requirements to open in the first place. These were not massage businesses, they were houses of ill repute. Rather than attack and deter legitimate business, the city should be enforcing the laws already on the books regarding prostitution and human trafficking. Thank you.
So anyone else would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to go and close the public hearing here. Oh, sorry.
You can close and I'll have comments after.
Okay, so any further comments from council? Portia Wilson?
Yes, so I was not on the council when this happened previously, but I know we have a history of limiting certain types of businesses. So if you could just refresh my memory, specifically when it came to like check cashing establishments and tobacco retailers and if you could focus on the cause and effect of that.
We have a restriction, as kind of referenced earlier, about location. 1,000-foot separation requirements for certain types of businesses. One being smoking paraphernalia establishments have to be so far apart from each other, so far away from sensitive uses such as a school or church or a park. That applies also to some types of alcohol establishments. So they are regulated through land use applications for those sensitive uses. Massage is not regulated in a land use regulatory area. We allow massage to occur anywhere in the city. So they don't have to be in a certain zone, they don't have to be in a certain location. And really, that was our way to promote that we recognize massage is a legitimate business and a health benefit and should be open to areas of all zones. So we chose not to do the regulatory land use authority through saying that it have to be in certain zoning districts. You can be anywhere, but you need to follow these particular operating characteristics. And that's what our massage ordinance does.
Okay, and in regards to check cashing?
Check cashing, it is not treated any different than traditional retail or a bank.
Okay. And do you happen to know the number of sole proprietors from the list you have here on the screen? If you don't, that's okay.
I don't know. Very small.
Very small, okay. That's all, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just to follow up on the sole practitioners. I, I really would have wanted to know that information because I think it makes a big difference if, you know, if an establishment can have 10 people working there and there's 25 of them, that's 25, 250 people, you know, able to do. Whereas if they're only one, you know, it's a big difference. And so I think we might want to consider if, if it is a one person, one man, one, whatever shop, that they're exempt from this, whether they're a home base or whether they're in a, an actual building. And then I really also, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the public necessity, whatever exemption. I, I think that's us getting into winners and losers and deciding, you know, you know, I mean, it puts us on a slippery slope, what's next? You know, a restaurant that comes in, oh, those guys use too much salt. So they can't, they can't come to here where you can only use this much salt or whatever over here. And so I'm a little concerned about that, that, that kind of get, I feel like we're getting in the business of picking the winners and losers and whatnot. I think we're doing a good thing here. I think we're on the right path. We're trying to reduce, because we'll never eliminate human trafficking. Personal disclaimer, I've never been to a massage hall. I don't like being massaged. And, but my wife absolutely loves it. And so I, I think we just need to be very careful that we're not disturbing legitimate business practices and, and whatnot. And so I'd, I'd like us to consider carving out the, the sole practitioners who are operating out of actual buildings also.
Just, I don't know, I don't think I mentioned it, but the public necessity format follows what you're used to seeing or we do for alcohol establishments. So when an area is considered over-concentrated through population, that there's enough alcohol as determined by ABC, then those people requesting the license have to come to the jurisdiction, which would be us to request the issuance of the license. And then for us, that would come before you and you would have to grant it. So it's a very similar type of process where the business owner would come and present to you what their operational plan is, why they're different, why they should be granted this license, what they're bringing to the community. And so it's based, you know, loosely on that same premise.
I kind of agree with the idea of carving out the exception for a one-owner business because I used to do acupuncture on a dog at the home of a lady who had a massage business at her home. And it was a legitimate massage business. And so I just don't, you know, she's not one of the dots on your thing. I don't know if she still practices, but they're important. And they, they generally don't, aren't big, you know, users of the, of the service. They kind of reach out to people word of mouth and who they know and trust to come into their home.
Well, just to clarify, this would not apply to home-based.
Right, but, but I believe that there are individual one-owner businesses who don't have people come to their home that are out in a business. And I, I like the idea of carving out, I like the idea of keeping the public necessity because we've used it when we evaluate liquor licenses for sale of alcohol. And we have kept liquor from being too over-concentrated in one neighborhood, which I think is good. And so I like to keep the public, but I, I agree with exempting the single-owner establishments.
I, I really have concern about the concentration of the locations. I do also agree with the single practitioner that they should be allowed to do business. But I'm conflicted because I want to encourage businesses in citrus heights. So I think, I think really it comes down to a law enforcement issue. You know, are we able to monitor these sites for their legitimate use? And have we gotten any complaints that would precipitate further action on our part?
So I have a little concern with how this law is going to be applied. Is it going to be applied to everybody equally? So if you're in the, someone's in the massage business and they're a sole proprietor and you're going to, that's operating out of home, you have someone who's in commercial space, I'd like to see that the law treated, them treated... I'd like to see that the law treated, them treated the same under the law. I do have some concerns that when it comes to the, I do have a question with regard to the public act or public necessity. I don't really have a sense of this. If, if I was a massage establishment, does that pose a particular financial hurdle for me to, if I wanted to pursue a public necessity, is that gonna cost me an extra 50 grand? Is it gonna cost me 10,000? It doesn't, it doesn't cost me anything? What's, what's the, how does that work?
Well, it would be an application fee that we would process. We don't actually have a fee for it as of yet, but the alcohol license processing fee, assuming it's a similar process, is $2,200. So that would be the process for us to review the application and bring it to you for review.
Okay. So my further comment certainly is, I think that we want to, having 50 establishments is much more difficult to provide enforcement services in that, with that quantity of, of businesses. I would say that I'm still a little fuzzy on how this is gonna get applied, who would it get, get us applied to, and I want to make sure that it's really an even, it's applied to everyone equally. So at this point, I still feel like I'm not sure that we, that we, we have the right ordinance yet. So what I would say is I'd like to, I'd like to work on it a little bit more and take it up at another time. So with that, that's, those are my feelings. Are we ready to take a vote?
We don't have a motion yet.
Mr. Mayor? I was just gonna say, if the council would like us to take to the comments into consideration that you had tonight and come back with a revised version, we can certainly do that too, if that's a pleasure of the council.
That's my motion.
Second?
Truthfully, no, no motion is necessary in that regard. I think if there's collective direction to the staff, I think we're hearing it and I think a majority is feeling a similar way. We don't need to take a motion, a vote.
Okay, great. Great, so let's just postpone this item. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 14. The subject is Greenback Open Space Naming Options. The recommendation is to review the options outlined in the staff report and provide direction on how to proceed.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Eric Singer, on behalf of the Planning Department, on a slightly later topic. Hopefully, we'll be able to breeze this, through this one pretty quickly. So at the August 25th, 2022 City Council meeting, a resident requested that council select a name for the existing city-owned open space located on Greenback Lane, basically between Park Oaks and Dewey Drive. Council directed staff at that time to bring forward options to name the unnamed space as one of its strategic objectives for 2023. So just a bit of background on the open space itself. Here it is visualized. As part of the Greenback Lane Complete Streets Project, which was completed in 2008, the city acquired and demolished 16 duplexes to accommodate the road widening and associated improvements. That acquisition actually exceeded the width necessary to allow for a full buildout of Greenback Lane. So the surplus land was designed to be a passive linear park parallel to Greenback. It has a meandering pathway and decorative landscaping. And in 2008, the city actually installed the Up, Up &amp; Away art piece within the park, but no official name for the park has ever been adopted. So because the city does not have a formal naming process for its assets, staff has come up with some of the following option for council's consideration and direction. And of course, council is not limited to these. You can also deliberate on any additional options as you see fit. But firstly, council can submit naming options yourselves for consideration and vote on this selection at this or any future meeting. The city could solicit responses from members of the community. So a similar process was done in the renaming of the Electric Greenway Trail to the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail. A name could be chosen based on places or figures of historical significance within the community. An ad hoc committee could be formed. Council can direct staff to develop a naming ordinance. So, you know, future unnamed resources could have a codified process for naming and, as I mentioned before, any other options that you wish to consider. So staff's ask essentially is that you provide guidance to us on which approach you would prefer to pursue. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. I love the fact that we always have community-based input around when we're doing these kind of projects. And I, but I would definitely like to see some type of ordinance from staff, but including that community-based kind of process so that every time that this comes up, it's something that is codified, we can go back and we can have a community input, do our marketing and research and all that, and everyone can be getting really excited about that because I was so happy when we renamed that trail from the Electric Greenway Trail. I was like, that makes no sense. But the community picked a very good fitting name for it.
I'm gonna second Portia.
Me too.
Because she took the words right out of my mouth.
Dean?
I do that sometimes.
I agree with everything said here. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, my only input on it, extra input, would be that, I don't want to box us into something. I really don't. I don't think it has to necessarily be historical. I don't think it has to necessarily be anything. I think it's best if we don't box ourselves into something.
If it's community-based, then the Historical Society and all the other people can put their input in and...
So I'd like to see a flash vote on this.
A flash vote would be good.
Yeah, a flash vote where people make their comments and they can decide why they... I don't know who's doing it.
Who's doing that? Who's doing that?
Not me. It's you, Brett. You're cutting that.
Nope, nope.
All right, so is that direction?
Yes, it is, to develop a naming ordinance. Thank you very much.
And just to clarify, when we come back with that naming ordinance to have a flash vote, is that the pleasure of the council, a flash vote? Is that a flash, hey, that's better. Is that a flash vote that you'd like some feedback on relative to some ideas? Is it related to a particular park? Is that the pleasure of the council as well?
So my, gosh, I'm afraid to speak now. My thought was to create a naming ordinance and have, make it community-based. So if that includes a flash vote, if it includes talking to the neighborhood associations, whatever that is, that we involve the community as much as possible in that process.
Absolutely.
So the ordinance first, then the flash vote.
Okay, thanks. That's the clarity I was looking for. Thank you.
Next item?
The next item is regular calendar, item number 15. The subject is Assembly Bill 742, Preventing the Use of Police Canines for the Purpose of Arrest, Apprehension, or Any Other Form of Crowd Control, Letter of Opposition. And the recommendation is to consider the signing and delivery of a letter of opposition to A B 742.
Let's take a five-minute recess and see if we can figure out what the story is with this. At 7:45? All right, may I have the next item, please?
We were on item 15. The subject is Assembly Bill 742.
Yes.
I'll just briefly handle this item. This is council consideration of, considering a letter of opposition on Assembly Bill 742 that would prevent the use of police canines for the purpose of arrest, apprehension, or any form of crowd control. This was requested by the city council to come forward on February 23rd. At the last meeting on March 23rd, there was a presentation on the bill as well as our own canine use here in Citrus Heights that the council heard about. And so tonight, simply bringing forward the report to see if the city council would like to consider a letter of opposition. A letter of opposition to A B Assembly Bill 742. So with that, if the council has any questions, I know you've received a presentation on this in the past, you've heard about it twice now. So it's really your consideration if you'd like to put forward a letter or not.
Any questions or comments from council?
Got a couple.
Yeah.
Okay, let me pull my notes up here very quickly. Chief, do we have post standards around our canine units?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we deploy find and bite?
Yes.
Okay. I think that the, the intent of the motion of the, of the bill is important. We know that biases do exist in policing and that we cannot always overcome them. The only way we could possibly do that is maybe by employing technology like using drones instead of canines. But I would encourage, I would encourage actually working with the authors of the bill. And when appropriate, I want to offer a substitute motion because I think that utilizing find and bite is, is more dangerous in most cases than it should be. It leaves people maimed, harmed, sometimes individuals who are not meant to be attacked are attacked. And I think that by putting in a, removing find and bite as a technique and maybe find and bark instead to notify you of where suspects are would be better and help be more help to what we're trying to accomplish here. And I would also suggest with, with that substitute motion to possibly remove the language that refers to removing canines from departments because I don't think removing the canines is the issue. I think it's how they're deployed. And anything that we can do to keep our community safe and make sure that suspects, even though they're, they're possibly doing something wrong, making sure that we are keeping them as safe as possible and not maiming them in the process is important.
Vice Mayor Daniels, you have a comment?
Sure. Chief, do we maim people?
We never intend to do that, no.
You know, I'm a little offended, actually, but I'll, I'll try to temper my words. But when we talk about bias in, in law enforcement, police work, whatnot, we need to get to 2023, okay? And the fact is that, that police canines save lives. They save lives and they save serious injury. And those lives and those serious injuries that they're saving are usually police officers, but not always because had a person not been apprehended through, through the use of that canine, who knows what might have happened? And regarding unintentional bites, in 20 years, the only person I saw that got unintentionally bit was another police officer. I never saw a citizen get, that wasn't part of the issue, suffer a canine bite. I'm sure it happens, but I think it's also extremely rare. Circle and bark, for lack of a better term, there are some other terms, but once your bad guy knows that that's what you do in your agency, your agency suffers. They do, they suffer. And it, to me, it's almost as, as silly as carrying an unloaded gun or something like that. Well, I'm gonna point my gun at you, but, you know, am I gonna get compliance? Probably not because you're gonna know it's unloaded. So it's just kind of silly. I think it's horrible when a, when a police canine has to bite somebody. I carry a scar not from a police canine, but from a canine, all the way down my finger that I incurred when I was in law enforcement and scared the heck out of me that I might not be able to continue. It is, it's, it's not good to be bit by a dog, but it's not the, sorry, sorry. The doctor can tell you. But it isn't the intention to bite anybody. It's, the intention is compliance. And you're getting the compliance through the aspect that if you fail to comply, the chances are you're going to get bit by a canine. So this bill i- is horrible. It will get police officers injured. It will get police officers killed. It will likely get citizens injured and killed because of, again, the lack of an effective enforcement tool. And it is a tool that is used so that you don't have to shoot people, so that you don't have to go up on people and that you get the compliance that you need, hopefully, without anybody getting bit. So that's where the focus should be. That's where I hope the council's focus is. I, I think that's, I'm just gonna conclude my remarks. I'll be very happy to move this item after my fellow council members have something to say.
I have nothing else to add to the comments so far.
I think Brett said it all. I think the report from the chief last time said it all, so I'm happy to second that motion after you make it.
And I, I definitely feel like, well, I, I'm very confident that, that canine officers save human officers. There's no question in my mind. If this law passes, more people are gonna die. And so I'm ready to vote.
I would move that we offer a letter of opposition to A B 742.
I second.
Rule call vote, please.
Councilmember Carpensica Costa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez Taff?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
No.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
And Mayor Schaefer?
Yes. Next item, please.
Our next, next item, item number 16, has been removed from the agenda. So our last item is Department Reports, number 17. The subject is Police Department Annual Report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Alex Turkot, your Chief of Police. With me today is Management Analyst Cassandra Canaan, one of the many unsung heroes of the chief's office. So, pleasure. I'd like to start off by thanking the men and women of the Citrus Heights Police Department, their dedication to service, the empathetic way in which they go about their business. They really are class acts and they do a great job out there each and every day. I would like to point out some folks that don't usually get to praise. One is Cassandra Canaan herself. She basically runs everything to do with money or details in my office. So I'm the big picture guy and she makes sure we can pay for it. So very good. And she's put a lot of work into this report. Also Commander Chris Frye in the back, our Operations Division Commander, and Commander Jason Russo, who's floating around here somewhere, taking care of all that is necessary for the Special Services Division. Their folks make them look good, but they really are responsible for significant operations here in our city and they do an excellent job. Also Crime Analyst Dominic Cooper, who's in the crowd, helps crunch the numbers and make the percentages for us and help us find the bad guys. In fact, we're just able to locate a significant person today and I will send a media release out about that later. That was an excellent thing, working with our detectives. And then lastly, our Police Service Managers Tiffany Campbell, Chella Cottrell, who you both saw earlier. They really are the support underneath our wings. They really keep the department running. Tiffany's shop actually keeps all the statistics, crosses all the Ts and dots all the Is of every police report and makes sure that we're compliant with all the government statistic keeping, that you'll be amazed... keeping that you'll be amazed by here. So thank you to all of you, appreciate it. All right, 2022 Annual Report. Here's kind of the overview of our crime statistics. I do want to remind council, during our last annual report, I did talk about, this would be the first year that we're transitioning from Uniform Crime Reporting Summary to a Uniform Crime Reporting National Incident-Based Reporting System. And basically what that means is for this one year, we're not exactly apples to apples on crime comparison because we went from one to the other. I'll talk about it a little bit more in further slides, but the data is relatable, but might just be a little off. Next year, in 2023, it'll be more apples to apples comparisons and we'll be able to be more confident in those numbers. Looking at our overall view, total crime for the entire, for statistic keeping is down 1%, which doesn't sound like a lot, but a tremendous feat given all the challenges that we had over this last year. Of note though, although crime is down, really what we're concerned here is our violent crime totals are up by 14%. Most notably is our aggravated assaults and our robbery. Homicide is up as well, but that represents only one additional case, which any of those are a tragedy, but one, one number here and there is a statistical significance. With our robberies, what we found is in our current climate, a number of our shoplifts that were normal, just larcenies in the past, have become more aggressive and turned into, have been elevated into robberies in this past year. For the aggravated assault category, our normal assaults, we have simple assault, which is just basic assault, and then aggravated assault where there'll be a weapon or an injury. If you take all of our assaults together, we're actually down in overall assaults, but we're up in aggravated assaults. What that means is of the assaults that are occurring, more weapons are being used and more injuries are happening. So that's where you see the statistic there. And so obviously that's a significant concern for us and a focus that we'll have in the next year, moving forward. On the other side here are traffic statistics and overall 3% reduction in total collisions. Largely that reduction was seen in our property damage only collisions, which are non-injury, car versus car, car versus a wall, car versus our monument signs, however many times they want to do that, which is super irritating. But you can see our injury collisions are up a little bit and we did have one additional fatal this year over last year. Also of significant concern is increase in DUI collisions, so they're starting to creep back up on us. But also we have answered with an increase in DUI arrests and so that maintains a strong focus. As we get our traffic team back to full staff, we should expect to see some more calming measures take place with that. All right. Discussing a little bit more with the changes in reporting. Don't hurt your eyes, you're not expected to look at this data. This just kind of gives you an overall. On the left side is a data set we used to keep under summary reporting. On the right side is now the data sets that we have to keep under the National Incident-Based Reporting System. And so it just kind of shows you, there's a lot more depth there. The most significant note, when we're talking about our apples to apples comparison, is we moved away from the old system, which was a hierarchy system. So if you had a crime, if you had an incident where multiple crimes were involved, say you had a aggravated assault with a stolen vehicle and a burglary. The aggravated assault, we've had injury, that would get counted as the most important crime. That would be the statistical point on the board, if you will. The other crimes would be lesser included, they wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily count. Now, under the incident-based one, each one of those will count up to 10 crimes, which is better for accuracy and better to keep statistics, but as we transition from one to another, it puts a little bit of error into the numbers. Luckily California is one of the last to move to this system, so the FBI has some pretty good research into what this does to your numbers and they, they say that on average, there's about a 2.1% margin of error in there. And for us, it would be 2.1% over reporting, so our 1% could be a 3% reduction as opposed to the other way because more crimes may have been reported under this system or tabulated under this system than were previously. That's the super exciting stuff, I don't think it's more fun from here. Okay, there you go. Some highlights of this last year. As you can see on the top left, City Manager Feeny, working a dispatch shift. We were low on staffing and we put him to work and he did an excellent job. I think he actually physically dispatched a grand total of one call, but it was silky smooth and they got where they needed to go. So it was wonderful. Our communications team that we recognized earlier handled over 35,000 911 calls, 89 text to 911 calls, which is a fairly new program for us, but like we had talked about earlier this evening, residents are able now to text to 911. So if you can't talk on the phone, or if the muscle memory is to use your fingers on the phone instead of your voice, because that's where we are now in society, this gives you an opportunity to reach out to us via text as well. And total calls into the center is 136,300. From our efforts with our homeless navigator, we were able to house over 112 individuals. Our calls for service related to those issues that are commonly associated with unhoused folks like camping, panhandling, loitering, we saw a 20% increase in those calls for service, or about 3,400 calls. Couple of case updates. As you recall, we brought our impact team online last year, which is kind of a merging of our old pop team with our old special investigations team. And so really this team is tasked with any real significant quality of life or criminal issue within our borders, there are specialists that take that on. Here's a couple of highlights for what our impact team was able to do over the past year here. This one, which identity theft chop shop, if you will, this was a significant operation with over 75 potential victims of identity theft, mail fraud, taking credit card numbers and such. Also, as part of our strategic goal, we had set up a chronic offender program with the city attorney's office. We were able to test that out with one significant nuisance offender who really, the whole case started with a low level, just being irritating in the neighborhood, but it started to affect his whole neighborhood and our unit alongside the city attorney was able to walk that through, get a warrant, subsequently make an arrest, and then it's been fairly peaceful ever since. And we'll knock on that one. So very good. Next, our hip folks. You can see some of the inspection statistics there, over 3,000 violations found and over 2,000 corrected, which is great. That cute puppy in the middle is Viva, that's our canine that works with USPS Task Force along with Detective Lombardo. That unit's been able to seize over $1 million, 230 pounds of marijuana, 14 pounds of methamphetamine, and 31 pounds of fentanyl, which is about enough fentanyl to kill everybody in the county and probably plaster too. So very good efforts there, trying to keep our mail safe and safeguard the postal system criminal activity. Animal Services, who we also recognize today, over 3,000 calls for service themselves, 511 animal incidents, 274 adoptions, and 181 reunifications with owners. And the rest of them, they probably made employees take home because they are very good at emotional blackmail. I have a rescue myself that was found here in Citrus Heights, cute as heck, but yeah, be careful if you're going to foster because it's going to stay. All right. Just recently, we were able to bring back our Police Department logs and be able to kind of have that transparency with the, with the community. We were able to, in fact Tiffany Shop was able to work on an automated solution where the labor time to actually produce the report for the public was reduced way down. It used to take about four hours, now it takes roughly an hour, maybe hour and a half on a, on a big day. And so we've also been publishing weekly reports online to kind of give people a sense of what's going on in the town. And this is just kind of that same, that same piece here, but from a yearly standpoint. So you can see over last year, over 5,000 traffic stops, over 9,000 reports, 1,500 arrests, 80,000 calls for service, and 136,000 phone calls to dispatch. That website on the bottom there is where you can go and see daily postings, Monday through Friday, of everything that happened the night before. And on Mondays, it includes the whole weekend. Also follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and any other app that your heart desires, we can find a way to get on there for you. Also great news, we're able to promote a lot of quality people this year. Chella Cottrell, our Police Services Manager, who spoke with you earlier, Anthony Bole, who is a police sergeant, Debra Nathan, Police Services Supervisor, Dan Stockbridge, Police Services Supervisor, and Katie Smith, Senior Records Assistant. And they've all hit the ground running and have already accomplished exceptional things in their units. From last year, this was our priorities and just kind of an update on those. So a major priority for us last year was staffing. We started last year with 18 vacancies and we were able to end the year with only eight. Our retention and churn has still been a challenge, but we're getting ahead of it. And currently, we have at least applicant names behind almost every one of our vacancies. So that's, that's positive. Takes a long time to get them through the system, but we're chugging right along. Traffic team, it was, we selected Sergeant Cassam to lead the traffic team and also two new motor officers. We also welcomed back Patrick McCoy, who was deployed overseas for about two years and he's back on a motor as well. So that motor team is almost back to full strength. We should hope to get back there by the end of this year, maybe spring of next year to get fully, fully staffed. On the crime front, we had the slight reduction in crime, but we were able to field our new impact team. We were also able to utilize private business partnerships to increase our overall security detection throughout the city. The technology behind surveillance cameras and detection has really, the price points have come down and the technology's really come up. And a lot of our private business partners have been able to secure their lots with some really, really good camera systems that have been able to solve a lot of our crimes, which is great. On the officer wellness front, we launched an inaugural pilot program called the Family Bridge this year, wherein we invited in, we consider our, we consider all of our employees' family, try to create a good environment there while holding them accountable, of course, because it's a workplace. But we felt that we want to go a step farther and actually bring the family in as well, so we invited a family to a three-week program. We had about 50 that originally enrolled and I think we graduated around 40 or so of those folks. And basically they got to get an overview of the police department, get to know command staff, they got to go try the simulator, see what their loved ones are up to, talk to our chaplains, really get an understanding of the trauma their loved ones would see at work and then how to best support them at home. And we look forward to making that an annual event and keeping that relationship good. Also, we've been reinvigorating the Citrus Heights Police Foundation, which is our nonprofit that services our department members. Through that foundation and local partnerships, we're able to do several staff appreciation events and barbecues and some other items. And there's one more item we'll talk about at the end that was helpful with the foundation as well. On the other end of wellness, you are what you eat. And so we were able to get some vendors to bring in, for purchase, fit meals, which basically are, you know, good, healthy, nutritious meals so that our midnight officers aren't stuck with drive-throughs and things like that. And I say the nighttime officers because those options are limited, but really it's been a big hit with our staff. And you know, when you either have your sandwich from home or you can go and get a nice nutritious meal with vegetables and things like that, it's been a pretty good hit. And you know, cost neutral for us, but just having the ability there to put good food with those folks has been, been nice. Here's some of our special events with our community engagement over the last year. I see all the smiling faces at all the various rounds. This is kind of our first year back from post-pandemic and it was nice to actually get out and see revitalization of some of the events that we had missed for a couple of years. And next year's priorities, we want to continue that trajectory with the community engagement. You know, it's been a city strategic plan as well, but the PD has, has a history of many civic engagement programs that we had to take a pause from due to pandemic and staffing and we're looking at bringing some of those back and try to enhance that as well because a lot of new faces in the department and we want those new faces to meet the good people of the community and not just those that are breaking the law. So that's a good part for us. Like I said before, with our hiring, retention is still a challenge. We are still seeing folks leave that we would rather save and so we're conducting a study currently to try to analyze some strategies to increase department retention and be able to keep the talent here within our borders. For crime, I mentioned earlier, our big concern, you know, obviously all crime is important, but the violent crime where people are hurt, that's really the focus that we want to go after. And so our patrol teams supplemented with the impact unit are really going to have a strong focus on seeking out violent repeat offenders and weapons violations over the next year and we'll report out on that next year. Like I said, a lot of new faces, a lot of new folks in the department, which is great, a lot of high energy, but those folks need to be trained back up. And so we'd be focusing on a lot of in-service training and making sure that we are keeping our staff on the cutting edge of technology, legislation, and de-escalation skills and those items there. And again, we're, we are now getting up there in our age, we're teenagers as a police department and some of our equipment needs replacing, like we've talked about. We're well on our way to doing that, but as you replace one thing, the next thing breaks. So it's a continual focus of upgrade and make sure that our officers are equipped with the best that we can, we can give to them, keep them safe and help them fight crime. And lastly, this was a partnership with our Citrus Heights Foundation. This is what we call the Honor Wall and this is a little monument that's on our PD break room, also kind of one of our wellness strategies. And it honors any of those folks who have, have given at least 10 years of service to the Citrus Heights Police Department and have retired honorably. And then also the middle shows the chiefs of police thus far. And so that's been a pretty nice thing there. Not sure if I've mentioned, or if you council has seen, but we had an Eagle Scout project from Carson Boyd a couple of years ago where the Eagle Scouts redid the whole patio out there at the PD and built furniture and made it a real nice place to be. And so the Citrus Heights Foundation came along and put this monument out there as well to really make it kind of a wellness space for them. So that's been nice. And as recently has been around on Facebook and some of our, some of our retirees have really been touched by it and been sending emails of thanks and appreciation for literally leaving their mark on Citrus Heights. So that's been, that's been really nice. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Question from council? Great job, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I wanted, it's a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on our way up.
We are on our way.
Down, but up.
Yep. I agree. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Next item, please.
The next item is City Manager Items.
All right. Well, good evening again, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, members of the council. Ash Feeny, your City Manager, and I do have a few brief updates here. If we can go to the next slide, please. Some good news, and actually this came out of some feedback too that we'd received in one of the flash votes that we use, having a prescription drug takeback day. So our police department has organized a national prescription drug takeback day that'll occur Saturday, April 22nd, at the police department's front parking lot and that'll run from 10 to 2. So if you have any prescription drugs that you want to get rid of, best way to do it is through one of these type of activities. So please bring them down and we'll make sure that they're disposed of properly. So thank you to everyone that's been involved in organizing that. We have a Capital Region Small Business Week that we're celebrating the week of May 1st through the 6th. And here in Citrus Heights, our Economic Development Team is working with the Small Business Administration to host an event at our community center. It's a free event and actually our director, Megan Huber, will be actually exhibiting at that event too, highlighting some of the things that the council's embraced and recently passed, like the Business Attraction Grant Program, as well as the other resources that we provide, working in conjunction with our partner agencies to promote small business. So that event will be occurring on Monday, May 1st, again at the community center from 2 to 5. So we want to get the word out there and anybody that's interested in business in Citrus Heights, be there, see how we can help you. The Community Projects Grant that the council went ahead and approved and made available to the community, we went ahead and extended that date for the grant applications to April 28th. So there's still time if you're out there and you'd like to submit an idea for one of the qualifying grant criteria, please go ahead and get that submitted by Friday, April 28th at 4:00 PM. We are seeing some exciting ideas, but we definitely want to see what else is out there. So this provides a little bit more time and we knew a few folks were definitely interested in that. And then lastly, speaking of community, as Mayor Schaefer opened up with the passing of Councilmember Steve Miller, his celebration of life is this Saturday, April 15th, at the Citrus Heights Community Center at 1:00. I know there'll be many there to celebrate the life and the contributions that Steve Miller made to this community, so wanted to make sure to put that out there. And that concludes my updates.
Well, thank you. Ash, can I have, next item, please?
So our next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Dana? All right. Next item, please.
There are no further items.
Okay. I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of a former council member and school board trustee, Stephen Sparky Miller. May he rest in peace. Thank you.